I'd like to call tonight's planning board meeting for the town of Poppy to order. Six thirty and we were all set. It still says it's muted.
Bear with us, we have a new ID person this evening.
All right, like to call tonight's meeting to order first if we would stand for the board relations. Good evening, everyone. Like to introduce myself. I'm Sue Smith, planning board chairman for town of Poppy. Introduce our people up here. My far right is John Shaheen. Evan Corson, our planning board secretary, Sarah La Judas, again Sue, Carl Farron Crew. Want to get the right. Dan Bargavus and Roy Smith, our town engineer, John Dunkle, and town attorney Jamie Sutson. And in the back, our codes enforcement officer, Tim Barrett is in back. First order of business, our meeting minutes from May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, there have been a couple. Spelling corrections, et cetera, that have been made. Are there any? From James corrections. Hearing none, I make the motion to approve them as amended. Second by John, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, we post. Motion carries. On our agenda, first up was listed a preliminary review for the Tang subdivision. They submitted an application for subdivision of land located at eighty-three seventy-six U.S. Route twenty. Tax map number zero-two-four dot dash zero-one dash zero-four dot zero. That was printed on our agenda and I have been advised that we, it is an incomplete application. So we may not be reviewing the Tang subdivision this evening.
And specifically, the codes officer has determined that with the silos on the property, that it, it is a farm lot and it would need to be five acres. So, and they proposed subdivision is shown as two acres.
This is right next to.
Next up on our agenda then, Perry Real Estate Holdings Broadfield Road subdivision. Preliminary review of an application for subdivision of land located at seventy-nine forty Broadfield Road, Manlis, New York. Tax map number zero-zero-four dash zero-three dash forty-four dot one. And zero-zero-four dot dash zero-three dash forty-nine. If you could introduce yourselves also, please.
Hey, I'm Pat Reynolds with I am using Rowan Land Spray, representing the absentee there. I have. So since our last time in front of the board, we have been in front of the EBA. And we've got our variances approved for lots two and lots three, the sixty-foot road frontages. We have now a revised map. Just having the note that those two variances were granted. And we've also revised this map just to include an easement, which is on lot two. Just a general ingress, egress and utility easement.
ZBA did approve it with some condition.
That is correct. Yes. Condition being they would like to see both lots two and three use the existing drive that is on lot two. So that's part of where now we have, we show an easement on the plan, just a general ingress, egress and utility easement. So that way we can convey a right-of-way for lot three. And then if needed, I know there was some early discussion about the wording for the other two properties using that existing drive. There's no question about the wording in their right-of-ways. So now with this new right, right-of-way showing on the map, Steve could grant them new right-of-way referencing the map.
John, John, when does it become a road?
And the applicants request a road and you need frontage, you know, as the division to be.
So, so this, this one driveway is serving three lots.
Because they got a variance.
Okay, so they can, it's fine.
Well, it's potentially will serve four lots, right? It would serve four lots to, to existing homes and then two.
Right, right. Okay, so it's these two and then these two. Yeah, so before.
Okay, none of, none of those lots are depending on public growth frontage.
Okay. So the condition the ZBA put in is that no other driveway would be installed for.
How, how down Broadfield though?
Right, right. Okay. Very good.
It's so that I'm clear, was the reasoning, the reasoning was to not have more impervious surface?
There's the neighbors to the west had expressed some concerns about drainage and how it flows onto their property now. So yes, there was some concern about adding an impervious driveway right adjacent to their property. The DVA. And yeah, I think everybody worked this out together.
Yeah, we all agreed it was a good solution, including the other two homeowners that would be sharing the driveway.
So that was advocate. How do you ensure that somewhere down the road that somebody else buys one of these lots and they don't play nice with the others then? Because we've been under an advisement to not encourage shared driveways for one of those reasons. So how do you ensure that potentially of four owners are playing nicely and getting some.
Snow plowing, maintenance, upkeep. Containing it now and have been doing so for almost twenty years. So I understand your concern, but I have faith in humanity, I guess.
Right away, I mean, can you put that in a right-of-way? Jamie?
Well, I, so one of, one of the things that we're going to need is the actual easement agreement. So I imagine that there's one existing for the lots that share now, it probably has to be modified. And it needs, so that's going to be a condition of this, this whole thing. So we need to see it, it needs to be sent to legal. Maybe you're going to have legal who's going to write it up. You want to see that it's, that there is reciprocal of, you know, arrangements in this agreement that needs to be maintained, et cetera. How it's going to be maintained and.
Would have, you know, would have lot two took sole responsibility for the driveway because it currently owns it right now.
That could be also an option.
I'm not saying I wanted, I'm just asking what my.
That could be an option. That's, that's quite a large burden. I think that the easement is also going to specifically state that it is intended for only two lots, which are going to be residential and no further subdivision would happen. I'd like to see a note on the plan to, to that effect. I'd like to also have a note on that, that this is a filed ingress and egress easement. So it'll be, obviously, we're not, it'll all have to be done simultaneously, but it'll say filed in the Anandagai County Clerk simultaneously. But some kind of note to that effect, you know what I'm talking about, right? And also a note that says no access is going to be permitted, like maybe a, you know, a, a note, a star on this part that goes in the note that says no access will be permitted. So eventually whoever buys this lot three is going to know that's not access. Did you get all that?
But to be clear, if it's a, there's a driveway agreement, we put it all on lot two. Yeah, you got to understand that runs with the D's are different. I just don't see how you get, if you're worried about it, it's for owners. You say you want to bring, one guy wants to bring in stone and the other three don't.
So I don't know if there is.
Driveway agreements, I'll say.
There are, there are.
A lot of people let. Challenging to get four people to agree on the maintenance and plowing and who's going to pay what and who we're going to hire and I think it would be an easier situation if one or maybe two parties took responsibility for the plowing and the maintenance and everybody else just has the right to use it. If they don't like how it's being maintained, they don't have to use it. So Kevin, I have a. What I'm saying, right? Like, there's a pothole drive around it. I'm just trying to be honest about, you know, how I think it would work and, and if it's aren't being charged, you use a driveway and it's possible you don't like it, you can spend a little money to fill it in.
So what, and what about, should we have any concern about buyer access? Or you just got to get back there?
Yeah, that was something, you know, the actual construction of that road, just because we require code standards for access. So that's something we'll need to, we talked about this.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be part of the subdivision or might suggest in two, question with lot three is that you guys retain site plan approval abilities, especially for lots ready when they actually go to get a building permit. Location, location and drainage management and all those things.
Ordinarily would not have it for residential, so.
By keeping the sensitivity here. To guess that.
They're coming back here to our board for building.
No, not a building permit, but my plan approval would be fired for a building permit. And at that time, you could also request the design of the road.
Is there a way we might be able to add a dotted line on that drawing that says you can't build on this line?
Well, I think anywhere on the property, you've got to, I mean, that's a big deal.
But I think the point that you're making is there's a concern about runoff and flooding house.
If we can have a quiet, so we can hear up here, please.
And I believe that that concern is necessary, right? So I was thinking maybe if we just put it out of line, that's, can't do anything over here.
Well, that's up to the board.
Well, that would be a whole engineering thing. I don't, I mean, that would, I don't think we can pick a random thing without the engineer studying it, so.
If you could propose a building envelope for the house, that was it, and say they're going to build in this envelope.
By the way, it's easy to park.
Well, the large lots of it, I was too raised, you know.
You're going to have to have it before it gets a building.
No, where the subject system is located and all that.
So, yeah, so we do have a note on the map just to cover that if I'm saying that they're not approved building lots and that we would have to provide that information before they should.
I was told it was an old sand pit or gravel that up top. So I'm fairly confident that it would. I had no issue if that was a requirement.
Well, I mean, here's the, the question then, if, whether this board wants to approve lots that are not building lots. What else would they be used for? You know, can we say, hey, you've got to, got to do these things and show us that they're approved building lots?
So prove them as non-building lots and then they come back and get that.
I mean, interesting precedent, you know?
No, no, I understand. No.
Part of them that we basically doesn't perfect, it's just good. They haven't been most of the first.
I mean, I don't know if we've been perched in the past, but I am. Maybe you could design one for the parking.
So if, if we're, so they have to go to file this map, they have to go to the, you know, Anandagai County Health Department, they're going to. I think it has to be literally right on here, not an approved building lot, not an approved building lot, if that's the direction that's.
So the, the note on the map had been approved by the health department. It's a common practice. We do typically, we had that note when it's a remainder lot, if they're carbon on an acre to build a home, perk that lot and then the remainder lots don't.
Just we've seen.
Yes.
Either lot.
So it was, it was at the time. Steve wasn't committed to where exactly the house was going to go on the lot. When we made the map, wasn't really something even explored out there much to see. So it went best to get the perk test at the time.
There's something on five acre, DOH, just greater, even to a grid and five acres. They just presume we're going to be able to do a subject.
Well, I, I, I think in this instance, you're going to presume you're going to be able to do something on that acreage, right? I mean, we don't have any reason not to believe it, but they're, they're still not approved building lots for Anandagai County standards. And so you know, we keep that note on the lot. I usually prefer that it be right on the lot. So if there's ever a search done, you'll, you'll know that.
It's, it's really not on our end. Any big deal to add a note onto the lots.
That's why you're asking for Jamie, just a note on.
On that, on the face of the lots. But I think more importantly, do need to figure out the ingress and egress easement because that's literally what this is all about and what happened that, that, that ZBA is a little unusual and we want to make sure that you know, that, that's what happens here is what they intended.
Do the, two current ones set their threshold on Broadfield?
And that was brought up at the ZBA meeting. Really the it was kind of the board brought up that we have sixty foot to work with that we can widen the driveway wide enough, make it safe to have the garbage cans out there and to also have vehicles be able to exit in that. What's that?
It could be no rage.
Yeah.
Another note, I am glad to see lot one, I think.
Yeah, sounds like everybody's happy to have that.
John, lot two, proposed lot two, drainage didn't seem to be as much of an issue as lot two. And lot two being nine, actually nine and a half acres.
That'd be nice if we had some contours on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could probably pull some. Would it be all right if I submitted like a more like sketch plan with the contours? Or is it something you'd want like a filed map and finalized map?
Usually.
To see the contours myself on a filed subdivision.
Once I, I can make a, I can submit as like a preliminary map or something with contours.
You're just going to use the USGS?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we need, I think, so we have an idea.
Yeah, just to go gravel that you picked up on the USGS.
So as far as what I'm looking at, because for us to actually go out and do like a field topo on the cost and stuff. So if I was pulling them off of the USGS, light art, it's going to pick up your major slopes, things like that. It should get the drainage along Broadfield.
Pretty sure it exists here, so that'll be fine.
Yeah.
You don't need to do on the ground, but for me.
Yeah, just to give us an idea of.
Right. And then I could circle back to the possible site plan. Is it, is it something we could do to avoid site plan, have a possible note on there saying that the lot two or lot three building permit will be dependent on satisfying engineering requirements as far as the drive, something like that. I just. Right now, I mean, we got kind of beat up at the ZBA public hearing and then I would imagine we're going to have a public hearing here. And then I'm afraid if it starts coming in for individual lots for site plan, if those get public hearing. It's just.
So we could add, we know that lots went into our not residential building lots. And you have to go to the county and obtain engineering approval from the, from the county engineer, right? I think.
In my big concern is once you see the geography, you'll probably get an idea of what. To be at that point, there's some building envelopes that could be established or something like that.
Okay, so maybe you better just have after you see that raise and.
Yeah, okay. So could we just talk through quickly what? I just want to make sure I understand. So if the building lots were not considered building lots at the end of this hearing, assuming that they were approved, what would the process be for them to become a building? Or have to have the county review it? Even though we've already.
Pass and have your.
So there would be a perk test and. Septic isn't. Somebody would have to buy the lot and then figure out where they're going to put a house on it before it gets approved.
Well, it'll be a subject without a, a house.
With just the purchase.
I'm just trying to work through if I'm going to sell a lot.
Right.
And it's not a billable lot. What is the person who has to point to that lot have to do? Technically have to do that before I can tell him to build a lot. So if that's going to be your requirement, I would rather just do it now. And, and I say I don't want to spend the money, but I don't want to have to come back. The intention is to build two houses back here. At some point it's going to happen. I'd like it to happen. And I would rather do that now and address that now if possible than to either have myself or one of my kids have to come back and, and try to do it all over again.
You know, exactly what you're dealing with from the.
I mean, I don't know where houses are going to go, but if it's, if it's as simple as just doing a perk and a general location, I think that's feasible.
Maybe a building locate, a building envelope.
Yeah.
Then you can spot your well and you can spot your septic field.
Well, and you're.
It's just good plan. It's not, it's not meant to be a burden as much as it's good practice.
Right, but I don't know if I'm building here, if my kids are building here. I don't know where houses are going. So what are you going to guess that's?
Make a big enough.
Well, right, you make, make a big decent sized envelope and also at that point it becomes easier for them to come back and say, hey, I want a moving building envelope, should be engineered.
The subject system. A house and a subject system can be built somewhere on this lot and that's what, what needs to be buildable.
I understand.
And then you can always come back here again, take it outside. Septic is going to be in the back of the house, of the house. And then your well is going to be on the opposite. And if your well's going in the back and well in for you, well, the house is. Okay, so it's just good to, you know, to think it out as best you can.
Now, what do we need for the access, the shared access in terms of?
Technical design, I need the width and the grade, approximate maximum. You show, you need to show that it meets the fire code.
Have there been any security problems in that, on that easement?
Currently right now, there's very little education, sort of the easement shown. In fact, the one neighbor mows all the way back almost to the end of the easement. It's pretty much just brush and gold.
Apparently one of those driveways shows one's gravel, one's asphalt.
Sorry.
Lot number one is asphalt.
It's a pretty much gravel drive that comes in and then, and then I put lot one started last time, it's brought it to now.
That probably gets that note that it's, it cannot be, it will not ever be accepted by the town as a because that's something that sometimes down the road, people, they decide, oh, let's get this over and we're like.
Just so, you know, wherever you do that perk test, that's where the septic has to go or you're going to have to do another protest.
Well, we have months to our next meeting, so I guess I don't know, but it might be, I mean, we would need it within two weeks.
I should be able to get you contours.
The notes we talked about.
Yeah, I can, I can get the notes on there. I don't know if you can schedule a protest in two weeks, if we can necessarily get that. We get the you know, kind of spec out the drive. You know, make sure, show something.
Draft separate easement as well. So that's something that you're going to have to have a lawyer too. So should we hold off on, on the public hearing? I think that's going to sound like we're going to have everything.
So the goal of the easement is to share responsibility between the four people that would be using it.
And to establish the easement and to, in writing, kind of document that has words and legal descriptions.
Okay.
Does it have to be tied to the existing properties deeds or is it just the easement?
Should.
The question I have is the on lot three, that sixty footer piece that goes out to Broadfield, what, is that a road power or is it a drive?
Bang over. But no improvement, someone's going to think at any advisor of it.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's something that's never going to be usable. I'm not even going to ask one of the neighbors if they want to buy it. Maybe they'll break it off. This, and that guarantees that it can't ever be. More, but.
More, but oh, I just think uh that's your road frontage for that lot right now.
Variance was based on that sixty feet.
Yeah. That's fine. Okay, we're keeping it there.
Just got a quick question on that Apex Properties, um, why not this? It looks like, uh, as I remember, there was a bunch of. There were, I, there was infrastructure that was on. Lot two. Right, but it's just an easement right now, right? I mean, why not just sell uh?
That that's what we're, yeah, we're selling him that.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll become part of his land.
Yeah.
We have a written agreement that I fully assume that. That outlines that.
Okay.
In case your, if your, excuse me, if your neighbors are interested in, you know, splitting some to that person, some to the other person and cutting it off. And they can come in and. Get a re-subdivision, that's what we would have to do and go and get the. Zero frontage instead of the sixty, but that seems to make sense to me, really.
Maybe somebody couldn't refresh my memory. Body line comes to.
It technically had a whole.
So at the.
Zero.
CBA meeting, there was talk amongst the board that.
Yeah.
There was all documents where it looked like when things were split off. Um, somebody had intended to do a public road that looped around between these two sixty foot frontages. At some point, and then that's um. Other thinking that that. Land owned by Apex uh got created with no road frontage. Or very little. So originally, we we did go in requesting a variance for that lot as well, having zero road frontage. Um, CBA uh attorney had said that. That is an existing, there was an existing not conforming and. Even though. We're giving it a piece of land and calling it lot one of our subdivision. Um, he was looking at is it wasn't really part of our subdivision and just made us uh. Get rid of that requested variance.
Uh, I was just trying to refresh my memory.
Is there a total acreage? The two point oh zero one eight, that's with. The piece that you're selling to them?
That's correct.
So it was like about a one acre lot to begin with.
It's probably. All these other lots are well and septic, right?
That's correct.
That's the only greatest public war.
See, you've been writing, you've got everything back.
Making notes, trying to make these up. Make whatever changes I can right away, get you guys to revise.
So it looks like come back next month with. Over and follow. That we can schedule all of what we're carrying after that. Excellent. You.
Thank you.
Can use now. Next on our agenda is the Hutten Strohsik West Subdivision. Preliminary review of an application for subdivision of land located on Pappy Hall Road. Place seventy seven acres on the west side and seven plus minus acres on the east side of Pappy Hall Road. Text map number zero two five dot dash zero three dash zero eight dot two zero two five. That there's zero three dash zero eight down three. Okay. Are you ready?
We are.
So I guess bring it, everybody. Speed a little bit, we've. Had. This. For us. Prior. And. There was one suggested subdivision and then talking and another possibility. Was brought forward, so we are now looking to the second. Possibility. Yes, in essence, this is on Pappy Hall. It first appeared before us that the east side of the road, which is a palace. And a small acreage, and then the rest was subdivided off. To be sold.
Right, yes.
And then on the west side of Pappy's Hall Road was more acreage, which also. Barn and a couple smaller buildings. And through town of Pappy code, there's been some barn, it's a farm and it's in farm zone, so the minimum acreage had to be five acres. And trying to reduce acreage, the buyer wants more acreage, doesn't want the barn, or you want the barn with the house, I'm not sure which.
Well, they wanted more acreage. We were, we we submitted the five acre. For that, but then they they wanted more acres, which. I guess made sense.
They don't want the barn.
They don't want the barn and the barn would would go with the house, because it's no, you know, it's a farmhouse and. The barn's right there with the garage. And so that makes sense, plus it's about five acres of land, so that would be a very nice. And this is, you know, this is kind of ready, it's the one with the barn. And so we thought it made sense. First of all, we maybe one of the barn. And so for the barns with the house. And the other acreage, so it'd be a very nice, little, small barn. You know, so somebody sold, but we then submitted and basically, and the view indicated. It's basically, this would. Just ex- extend. The farmhouse. You know, with these, the barn with it, now you have the whole together in one, it's now.
Which is, do you have a? Paper copy of the.
This is all.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, did send the.
Right, which at some point we would need.
Yeah, we did, I did, I did give it.
And if you have, that's the old one.
The one factory.
And the old ones, those five acres there, so. This is what you said. And you know.
Oh, I can get it.
So we had that like.
What submitted is doing that thing to add to.
But the farmhouse is. Yeah, so.
This, this is, this is the.
You can see it on here, six point eight.
One, six point eight seven, okay, I got it.
It's not a tiny.
Something happened to the barn would be known a lot.
Well, it's 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 basically the way we're still, we're adding it to this.
Right, right.
So it's just one big.
Yep.
It's a property. And yeah, I would say, somebody might just want that. But it's burned down and sell us that the.
Yeah.
Beautiful barns in the circle.
Yep. Next.
And it's all. Laid.
Yeah.
Beautiful barns. And there's a sixty nine. It's been as well, it it was in bad shape, but we. The newest metal roof on it and it's been good and painted and. Trying to protect this. Right now, good shape.
Some of the barns in there start the button.
Not a lot of them, I guess, don't need them anymore.
No.
But it's a nice. Families and lots of different some leagues and that, which is what we did.
Yeah.
It's more than a, a smaller barn was a chicken barn, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's a chicken coop. It's a little garage and chicken coop.
Yeah, yeah.
Chicken stocks. Berries. And sixty four.
So.
On the burn side of the street, how much land is there?
It's twenty eight acres.
No, I mean.
Oh, oh, seventy seven acres, seventy seven, I'm sorry.
It's. All of, on both sides, it's seventy seven acres, it's.
No, I mean.
On the burn side, okay. And then on the house side.
Outside.
Seventy seven on that side and.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventy seven, I mean.
And then six, six point eight on the.
So in the whole house lot is is a single lot. There's nothing else surrounding it.
Are you looking at it, are you looking at it? Okay, this is, yeah, this is the farmhouse.
And this is the lot that exists.
This is the lot now.
Okay.
This is, this is with the with the farm.
Okay.
And then we're adding this one. Yeah, the hundred eighty acres is all sixty up here and then the rest of this is farmland and just trying to. Good, it's all we just saw, farmland to the farmers.
Okay.
Our thoughts.
There is something on the barn side.
Oh, no, 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 no. Hey, there's a subject on.
House, house side, not nothing on the barn side.
Just the well.
Through the what? Low on outside also.
I just questioned if we'd be setting a precedence of combining parcels. But with.
The road down middle.
Essentially be combining.
I mean, it's not. Not allowed, it's a, I I think it's a discretionary, um. You know, reasonable development of land situation, and this is different in that. Burns right across the street. And it would be is the correct acreage, so someone could have a little homestead or.
It's not a heavily traveled road.
That's a nice part of that road.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in our code that does prohibit it, and there are other towns, it's pretty frequent on. Like fun parcels, like where they have a.
Yeah.
I I think you didn't mention last, because that was issue, big issue last time and. It seemed like you, because certain things changed, there's a number of them now that do have lots, roads going through them, because of the change and. In the putting roads in, I could point it.
Well, yes, I mean, usually those lots, the the roads came second, but there is precedent for where the roads already there to to combine them. As a single text map parcel, so it's feasible. I think that that, I think you can be intentional about why this would be. Unique, I don't think it's a great idea in general.
Same with structures go with the house, basically. And this setup now just looks a lot. Nicer, neater, or whatever.
You know, I I, to me, it's. What's that road? I agree, it's not the ideal situation, but. Feel like it's all right. The location of it all. Be nice to see the barn fixed up.
It is.
Yeah.
I'll put a lot of money as well. New roof. Payed in. And there was a chicken coop.
And there's enough space to do. The animals on that side.
Yeah, directions could have, and and plus, of course, there's the eight acres across, that's what we do with our power moving across and they dashed it in that area.
Technically, then, is this a lot line adjustment? Um, the answer is. Do we, in other words, do we need a public hearing on it? Is it a lot line adjustment? Can we do a lot line adjustment? Via purview of this board. Instead of just the codes.
Yes.
There you go.
But, you know, it. It's again, the purview of this board, if you think this public hearing would be a a good idea, you can call for it.
No, I don't see a need, no. Yeah, because am I.
Lot line adjustment, but we'll vote on.
Okay, well, we do have, um. I I think we should see her, yeah.
Or have any on. So moving forward with this, uh, we're gonna do this seeker, and I have the short environmental assessment form. In front of me, it's a series of eleven questions, based on our input and information we have on this. And the two and possible answers, it says no or small impact may occur. Or moderate to large impact may occur. I'll read the questions and then the board and I will decide. Which answer is. Which answer is, based on the input and information that we have. Um, we do have. Fitted application from us. Environmental information with it also.
There is, there is a, uh. There is a one we submitted also for a lot line adjustment.
Yes, that's a subdivision, if there is one for five hundred.
Yeah.
Or done this thing. It is.
Two. It will, um. And again, that because they've been before us before, and we asked a lot of questions at that time. We're drawing upon what they presented first time plus before us now. Number one, will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? So, it's. Armed, this is run zone. Do proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? I say no, um. Already being, as it is. Will proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? No, or small impact based on the farms. Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No, there's some impact. Will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Will proposed action impact existing public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No, no. Will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Hmm, no. Um, no, I'm just making a note with, on the. Larger parcel, it's being. Subdivided off, the limestone creek does flow through there in the right federal wetlands, but it's not anywhere near where the, uh, no. Actual farm, you know, said it does not affect. A safe bridge. Being adjoined to the lot across the road.
The good part is, it's never flooded there, it's flooded out there, it's never there.
Will proposed action result in increase for the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No, lot line adjustment. Eleven, will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? We don't know. So based on these findings, I make a motion for a negative declaration, but second motion is gross, like, line adjustment. So we have the motion, and it's back up. Mike Kevin, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any post? Motion carries for a negative deck and the seeker.
Did maybe we just make a motion on this?
Yeah, so let me, um, just clarify to you that, um, this is actually, it's called a simple subdivision under our code, and the codes officer. As he did here, can refer it to the planning board for advice or action, which is what you've decided to do. And it's, he did that once before, I believe, on a, on this subdivision. Um. So the, the board can waive any requirements, and this board is waived the public hearing, so I think that should be a finding. And that it's a, that it's a simple subdivision and no public hearings required. Um, authorize the codes officer to, um, sign the subdivision map. Um, yeah, have the requirement that this subdivision be, um, filed with the Anadaga County Clerk's Office, uh, in accordance with its procedures and all the. Unsignatures you need to run around and get for that, and. Um, once filed, and that will come, um, and be delivered to the town, so those would be my recommended. Um. Conditions, you might also want to say something about this being unique, we talked about that in the resolution.
So we would need a, um. A motion. Vote on?
Yes.
Excellent. I can make a motion? I need this.
It's very fast sometimes.
Amazing. Um, and the. Tax map. We have, um, we won't have one without it being.
No, it's, well. The tax map number that it's being added to. And.
There really would be two tax map numbers, right? Yeah.
Yes.
So I need both of you to, to the motion.
You know, from right here, yeah, two sided.
Yeah, there, there.
Those both of them, oh, yeah.
In nature.
All right. If you. So I make a motion that we empower the code enforcement officer. To do a lot line adjustment on tax map number zero two five. Point, uh, dot dash zero three dash zero eight dot two, and. Tax map number zero two five dot dash zero three dash zero eight. Dot three. And. Rest of my. Um. And.
Take now.
Yeah.
That.
If you reference the, reference the actual map.
Uh.
As shown on map.
Yeah, the, and. As shown on. Uh, as shown. Uh. The Gary Trow map. Number. Map, um, that's the text.
Dated three, three.
Here is the three, oh, yeah. The, um, Hutten Strosak West Subdivision part of lot seventy. Map dated. Uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. And we, the board will waive the public hearing. And. Uh, I've already authorized the code enforcement officer to sign the subdivision map. And the subdivision map must be filed with the county clerk's office and then filed with the town. And this is a very unique situation that we are.
With the finding that it's, it's unique because it will create a new farm watch, uh.
Because it will, and it's divided by, uh, Coring Delphi Road.
No, we've got.
A property hollow running, I, I, obviously. So, and there's a timeframe for him to have the map filed?
Well, usually it is sixty days. Um.
Just so they know.
But one question, though, last time we had this, this lot line. I got, saw the C P I, went down, as I recorded, and we said, we don't need it. So you learned that. We, I don't think, I think there'll be a C P I.
Yeah.
A C P I, an actual.
Oh, you don't, yeah, they, no, they'd wait.
Took it down there, and they said.
Yeah, so they, it's, they want only paper.
Yeah, you know, why, because they just throw it into the computer, yeah.
They do, yes.
The last time I got a C P I.
Are we also only taking paper, Tim, now?
I think we got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything to the contrary, if the code's notwithstanding.
Now, that makes a difference.
Good.
So we have a motion.
By Kevin.
I'll second.
Second by John, any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, I will give it to you, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. I'll leave you off.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Next. On our agenda. Is continued review of site plan for the project. Uh, for Palladino Farms, also known Heritage Hill, located at thirty-one forty-nine Sweet Road, tax map number zero one eight, that dash four. Dash fifteen. At one. Oh.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have here, yes, I, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is new.
Okay.
Than the one that, yeah, that order, because Dave and I got a chance to review it, and I had one other change which I was playing.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll.
This is, yeah, so this is the new, latest seeker.
Latest.
Since five o'clock, yes.
It's even newer than five o'clock?
Yes. You guys.
Nothing wanted, yeah?
Look, this is not, secret. The.
Great. I'm just gonna get this changed.
Hey, that's all.
Okay.
Dan, just a quick question before you started, um. The yield thermal. He was just in your, you call it a peep bar. Is that a vertical well, or is it a seal person? John, does that impact?
Um. The closed system, so no, it doesn't.
Doesn't impact any. Of the amount of property.
Basically, they recycle.
Yeah, I know, I have the same system, like, it's like a trench, you put piping in it, and it's.
It's all sealed.
It's all sealed, okay, so that has no, same here, but. It's. They're doing the horizontal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're saying, did you ever, yeah, actually, no one's just, a lot of way astirred.
And more impacting amount of land stirred? When we dug, within, in my property, we dug three, three hundred foot trenches, put the pipe in, put soil back in.
Theoretically, I guess it is soil disturbance. On the surface.
Sure.
I said theoretically, you are disturbing the soil, right, digging trenches on the surface.
Yeah.
And, and it's going under the porcupines, go out under the parking lot.
Oh, I know, parking lot, it's already previously disturbed.
Okay, so it's, yes.
Thank you.
So, there you go. Did that, should we see that on the map, or does that really?
Your, you, if it's important to you.
Yeah, I.
Have it on you.
I don't see that.
Yes, no. But it's subsurface anyway. Okay. I'm clear for you.
Make sure that's in the record, if, if this soil disturbance threshold becomes easier topic, make sure it's.
That, that, that added to it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying you would not want to see it on the map? Yeah, I don't need to see it on the map because it's subsurface anyway.
So it was a lot.
Great.
Yeah, I think there should be a notice, at least indicating where it is.
Right.
And that'll cover, that'll cover the fact it's not arming grounds.
Yeah, okay.
Um. So in the past month, we have gotten some, some documents in, um, there's been. A lot within the last week. And we just got handed. Summary document. It's not. Um. Logically put everything all together.
If I may.
Um, go ahead.
Sure, just to make sure your records are. My name, my name's David Stewart. Here on behalf of Palladium Farms. Um, I'm a little bit late to the party, but my understanding was, um, I reviewed the, the minutes from the last session. I reviewed the secret application prepared by Mr. Palladino. I prepared the supplemental memorandum that you guys have in front of you, that's intended to address a number of the issues that I pulled out of the, uh. Previous minutes, so we can. You know, my understanding is we're here for, we're viewing to do the, go through the secret questions, if you'd like. Happy to take you through the memorandum, um, quickly, just so you can. See what issues we've addressed there, or if you'd like to go through the secret first, it's. Your call.
Well, there were other things other than secret.
And just secret.
Uh, discussed, and I know Dan's already care of some of them.
Yeah, and that's right, so whi- whichever order you'd like to, to, to go in.
Or you changes, I'm here.
I think there was just a couple of incomplete questions that we just, you know, answered. In this previous one, there was a couple of boxes up for luck over.
I would say the one would be total acreage should be physically disturbed, that now says one acre.
Uh, less than one acre.
Less than one acre. Or less than, I'm sorry.
And the well installation in the back, that's well it serves. Farm or? No, the, the, it's well information is the one that's right on the property. Not using all the water from this well.
Well, information is prepared themselves.
Oh, okay, and, and it will be for also the new facility, okay. With the, the no capture tanks. That's the same as before. Mission eleven. In.
One of the newer farms said. All the breweries. Discharge. Will be going into the tanks. Offsite.
That's from brewing.
Until such time as the subject's approved, right? You're gonna do that, that's gonna always be that way?
We've got a secret, same issue. It's been, it's been passed, same facility.
Okay. As the, the brewery's done deal, we've already approved that.
And I think that's important, that we make that the station, that we're here simply for the meat.
For the, for the meat pack facility, correct?
Right, right, right. Breweries have, yeah. I'm doing.
Have you made any advancement on both?
We're gonna do the lot line adjustment.
And.
I need hold the land surveyors in the process of putting that application in. Leave it's been submitted, yeah, we can talk about them.
What was the name?
Line need call.
We have, we talked about signs. I have examples.
Um, the signs that will, are all listed on the latest site plan that, say, to describe exactly what their, um. In verbally describe how they're gonna look. Design for, um, the new facility. Um, we hope, I don't have a design for it because we don't have the name, but it'll be the same exact size and very similar makeup, there's overcutings across the street, it'll be out of the right of ways.
There'll be a separate sign for Heritage Hill, and, uh, there's one combined sign.
Right.
Between the Ingress and Negress, right away, so like.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm saying.
One combined sign, yes.
She's got phenomenal here.
She does, sir.
As we recorded.
She's a telepathic, she's.
Yeah, she got pretty amazing. But it's really gonna be on the footprint of the Quonset hut.
That's right.
Basically.
Have you determined that there's only seventy-five gallons of waste water per day?
That's based on what we typically see in our current, um. And Grand Boulevard and what we think it's gonna be, I mean, it's.
It's approximately the same size.
It's approximately the same amount, yes.
It's fair. I hope understand that, that what you process in your current location, you'd be approximately same volume of meat processed.
Well, the wastewater is gonna basically come from cleanup. And that's gonna be essentially the same amount of equipment, but I mean, it's gonna be give or take for sure, but. That's what I suspect it will be.
Primarily it's high-pressure, low-volume water.
Uh, yes, correct, yeah.
So on the seeker, you've got, like, again, and John had mentioned, um, after tanks initially for offsite, but that. Changing that or I?
Yeah, I can explain to you the whole, the whole plan.
Yeah, 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 sure.
So we're putting in a two thousand gallon, uh, parking lot safe tank.
Yep.
Right now, capturing brewery waste that will also capture the approximate seventy-five gallons a day of just washout waste.
Right.
The only other waste that would exist is from the bathrooms. That initially is going to be captured in a separate fifteen hundred gallon, um, uh, uh. Septic tank.
Yep.
Be pumped away until we've had enough time with the new septic system running. So the county can say, oh, you're well be that, you're well below your capacity, go ahead and add that in, and then we'll tie the line in, and that will only be bathroom waste from sixteen employees not open to the public.
Okay, and the public bathrooms now go where?
To the septic.
To the septic, okay.
Alright.
So the big septic you sit, you're building is just for the bathrooms?
Yeah, bathrooms and the kitchen.
Oh, yeah, the kitchen and the, uh.
Right, 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 right. Have a great staff.
So, yep.
Yep.
What sort of plan it is for the wastewater from the meatpacking facility to eventually go into the septic?
It'll always be shipped out.
Yeah.
Being permanently tied into the, for the clean-out tanks is in the front of the new building, so we're in separate, so.
Yeah.
Forever going to be pumped out, shipped away.
Where does that waste go?
You have to ask Dewey Northrop.
Waste, waste running treatment plant.
I don't tell them, yeah.
Yeah, it was a metro. It's like getting your septic tank pumped at your house, they take it from that. Yeah. About how much will that? All part of it, you don't know.
Hundred twenty-five dollars a load, two hundred fifty dollars a load.
How many loads you usually send out once a week, once a month?
I haven't done it yet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I talked to Brian, um, to Brian, you know, uh, uncle.
Yep.
Um, and he's, uh, twice a week, so I anticipate will probably be a week, and he's got a lot smaller tank, so very smart operation.
Yeah.
So again, though, the, uh. The environmental statement is not initially there. Being captured tanks, it's gonna be in captured tanks.
Yeah, with the exception of the bath, if I could add on the, except the bathrooms may.
Right, someday.
That would be, oh, I would add, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Got it.
And the, uh, the heating is just for the, the, um, meatpacking, uh. Geo thermals.
That's just for his side.
And same, same with the solar, is that just for his side of the?
Solar will be for the whole facility.
Operation, yeah.
Yeah. In the, the, the current brewery is on propane. In for heat, talked over that could be a tie-in, depends on the capacity.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're still pending a letter from the D E C, you know, when that's coming out.
I'd be honest with you, yeah, engineer called the D E C and said, what's going on, it's just a general permit, he said, you're gonna issue it, but we're waiting for the county, called the county, the county said, but we're waiting for the D E C to issue the general permit. So it should be a matter of weeks, but again, nothing's gonna go forward as far as construction goes. Or any letter we have, he's giving us the right to, most important part to get ready is to raise the, uh, onset barn and get it cleaned out, but I'm like, won't do any of that until, you know.
So we, we have not opened a public hearing on this yet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so this is a continuation of, I just looked.
No.
Close it, right, we did close, okay, okay. I got it. Yep, no, I, I just, uh, wanna be clear, so it, it says continue review of site plan, we did, uh, we just haven't done seeker. And seeker is just gonna be for, uh, meatpacking portion, okay? Hold, so forget it. Press, pass the processing.
Which, okay, a couple things, parking within the county right away, which. We've seen work go on, someone up there, um, copy rice, rice plants, farm exhibit.
I apologize for the size and scale, Mr. Palladino can distribute full sizes. Or.
Yeah, and I don't see. The same. Like you're parking in the entrance.
Already been seated down, they can hear, already all grass up there, you can't even drive over it, it's, I've been parking only two rows and the site plan has been updated accordingly, and the county letters references that because they saw it updated.
Yeah, see, but they're also. It's certainly driveway required in commercial, I don't understand, and this. Somebody's comment that says that there is a decision. Those from Marty. State D O T or county.
Next, I know where you're going, can I answer?
Yeah.
Marty waived the S W P P P, they signed the letter from the engineer confirming it's less than one acre planet, right?
Right.
He did not, I did not ask him to waive anything with the special driveway, that was already allows for conditional approval, it's something that I'm going to work with them, uh, with Marty to get that, uh, whatever he needs.
Just clarification at this point, you don't. That's where I was going with that.
Yeah.
Okay, when did we approve for driveway, if through the.
So.
You remember, John, what we approved for driveway?
I actually do.
Oh.
It's the existing driveway since they've been since it was from coming to our shift.
Didn't you have to get a letter back then from?
Yeah.
A D O T?
That's what I recall.
Yeah, or from our, uh.
Now you're, you have that, it's been.
Yeah, you don't, you didn't get a letter from the county D O T when you first opened?
Not that I, not that, I can't say that definitively, I just, I don't remember that being processed, I remember.
Usually we ask for that.
Well, I wasn't, we should just hear that whenever. So, I don't know the answer to that. Tim, you know the answer to that?
He's new too.
I can look for it.
Yeah, cuz that would typically be a question we would have asked at the time. Something to look at, because then it's saying you haven't to. Have to do any of that. If you don't remember soon, do you?
Probably won't, yeah, they're far away.
Okay, I thought we did it, okay, cuz then, you know, if it was already approved as a road, it wouldn't be the T.
Is it the roads connect, is it the, the curb tag?
Yeah, you know, that's the whole psych distance and all that, when he did the brewery, I think he must have requested a letter.
Oh.
From the county.
It's ongoing, so.
Yeah.
We do have, um. We do have the county. It's referral.
But I mean the county referral for the original.
Right, but if we look at this referral as.
Yeah, okay.
Through this. Got more information then, um. As this has been ongoing and so on, that there's an existing site plan, and this is a modification to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to declare that this is an amendment. Site plan that we are reviewing. It's an unlisted action for seeker, which does not meet any criteria for type one. But it's deep processing with reviewing. A short form E A F provides sufficient information for this board to make a determination. Short form seeker has been updated, supplemental information has been provided and will be reviewed by the board. Board is declaring lead agency for this unlisted action. That's my motion.
I second the motion.
Further discussion by the board. All in favor?
Aye.
We post.
This is a point of information, March twentieth, twenty seventeen. Planning board minutes did have a statement. In them, the ingress egress has been approved by the county.
So you wouldn't need another approval.
Well, it's going to be, that'll be a finding that we'll, we'll have to make as part of our determination and secret process. The, the county referral, um. Does talk of, does have a, a number three applicant must coordinate with the Unadog County Department of Transportation. Um, and regarding traffic data access plans for the project. Um, department advises that the two southerly driveways will be required to meet commercial driveway standards, no additional driveway access will be granted. Um, onto Sweet Road, um, and that. And this is, um. A modification, right, so it would need to, either be accepted by this board as part of the approval or be overwrought by a majority customer. The municipality must ensure any mitigation determined by the department was reflected on the plans, so that is something that can, um.
Because the county probably is not thinking of, they're not looking at the existing. Approval, they're looking at this as a new standalone.
Um, no, I think that they're. No additional. Right.
They're not, there's no additional driveways going in, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, but they did have a statement about the parking right away.
They did.
Right.
It's been taken care of.
But the, but the driveway cuts.
Yeah.
Were already addressed. My, my point.
The two southerly driveways need to meet commercial driveway standards.
Correct.
Yes.
And I believe that was. This is, this is from when?
It's the most recent.
And where's your one from?
Fourteen seventeen.
I just have the minutes, I don't have the, uh. The big county letter, this is.
Oh, and the minutes address that, uh. Ingress, egress is shown approved by the county.
Commercial, that's.
Loading area already exists, always will go into underground tanks for the.
Okay. Okay, it's all right, I'm just looking for the word commercial, that's the fire department, whatever, you know, that's. So, Mr. Stewart, you've seen the. Uh, county referral, uh, okay, well. It's. It does have that, that condition, we'll be talking about that, just to make sure it meets standards, and I believe we already did talk about that as well.
I think I've got it, I've got it right here.
Yeah, please, we'll get it on the fly.
You had us look on, on the fly. Why, I wanna return the favor.
Well, yeah, I mean, no, nothing's gonna be decided tonight till we, everyone reviews everything here, obviously. So, John, you. Lights was a question brought up by several, uh, on the building itself. Everything was fine with those, did make any changes with those out in the parking areas or whatever?
Well, we set them off that night, and then, um, I've ordered, um, like time compliant lights for all up there, and they're in.
Mm-hmm.
Like this, trying to coordinate this with machinery that come up so we can get out there and give them time, so, yeah, they're already in, I got eight of them.
Like cut sheets for the building for those lights?
Yeah.
Those light, those cut sheets are what you already have, uh, John, that I submitted last month, so, yep, they're the outside pole lights, and that's what I ordered, yeah.
New lights are compliant with town standards.
Okay.
Just sort of to, um. Reiterate, uh, you know, that. That the secret findings and, and decision won't be made tonight, we have to obviously digest all of this, the board. Um, but it might be a good time to discuss on some of the. Environmental impacts, so we can, you know, think about that, that as you're making a decision. Coming forward, so I think there were some, um, you talked about the lighting, so. And you've looked at the dark sky compliant lighting?
Mm-hmm.
And there particularly was, were a couple of neighbors, um, had mentioned things last week, was that, has that been all addressed?
It's a lighting, that's what you said.
Oh, yeah, and they changed that.
That's what I was just talking about. And, and that was done, um, there was, there had been some, um, concern about, I think. Noise. Um, I don't, so you want, if you wanna discuss that and how, how that may be, um.
Yeah, and that was the decibel level at property lines, I believe. That we.
Again, I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to bring it up so that there can be discussion about that.
Well, relative to the meat processing facility, Mr. Seidlaw didn't give you that the loudest machine is seven. Seven decibels?
Seventy.
Seventy, right, and it's inside the building, standing next.
Inside a building that's also gonna be insulated and, like, cuz it's troll.
Refrigerated, right, correct, so.
Bucket compressor or something. Yeah, there will be coolers outside.
Undercover.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be undercover.
What?
Uh, you have, did you?
Should be able to get that number from the manufacturer.
We haven't, we haven't procured them yet, but. We can, we can get a, we can get a outdoor compressor, we got range, yeah.
Um, to the extent that there, that this has been an ongoing, um, business, were there any other concerns about that, um?
Well, there was a certain music. The level of music.
Time, timeframes, frequency, anything like that, but. Needs to be addressed.
Those items need to be addressed, also to this application, because we're talking strictly about the meat processes, so.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking strictly about it, but I, I think it's, it's a, it's a modification to the application. So to the extent that something comes into the, um, purview of this board, I think it, it can be discussed. But it isn't, it is a modification, you know, there's any significant, um. Change, I think it's, it's what needs to be. That's it.
And what, what we've got, you, I think you talked last time about the hours of music and. Ten, is it?
No, nine, nine, the latest, that's Friday, Saturday, seven.
Right, right, right.
Sunday, six. Nick's body decibel reader, you know, when he left last month, he did a lot of stuff, body decibel reader, he's gone now, he's not past thirty, more than a hundred feet away from. Stage, uh, I listened to people last year, and instead of having bands on a regular basis, I have single and do acoustic singers, and anybody's welcome to come up anytime. Hang out and listen to it and walk the property lines, if there's a stiff wind blowing in a certain direction, maybe it'll carry, but Nick has gone around every time and checked festivals, and he's nowhere near seventy on our property lines. Decibels and he's nowhere near seventy on our property lines.
Yeah, I mean, I was there Memorial Day for a couple of drinks and I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't acoustic.
I, so, I mean, when I say acoustic, a guy, not a band, I mean, a guy singing with guitar and a microphone.
Well, it's a bass, drums. I love what the guitar, well, that's what I was gonna say. I took the opportunity. Just because I was there to just ride around. It's, it's interesting because in the parking lot, you can bear with. Um, it's very, very unnoticedable. In the parking lot, but when I drove around to, I mean. Well, in fact, I went across the street to Holbrook, he couldn't. It was very not obtrusive at all over there, Press Falls Road, but when I got down to Michael. Uh, the circle down there, I don't know if it's the topography. Uh, but the drums and the bass. Is sitting in the circle with my windows rolled down in my truck. It was, it was annoying.
Every day that we have music, Nick will drive to Michael Avenue, register the decibels and if they're above seventy, we turn it down.
Is that the, uh, that was the requirement seventy, right at the property line?
Yes, that was that as a policy.
As a policy seventy at the property line.
Are you doing it now?
Look, we have to remember that as, you know, we, we go to seeker and conditions.
Yeah, because I think we did that for, um, you know, that stone, that it had to be seventy decibels at the property line.
And. I'll be after that. As was the case when I made my initial application, we have a couple of events and one of them is bright vibes, which we're not having this year, but we hope to have back next year. We did sour bands and that took the place of us doing our typical Fourth of July celebration that I did one before. Heritage Hill or the other neighbors have done, so that's, um, you know, caveat, but we tried to do it. Even with that, you know, I tell them bands done by nine people out by ten and, you know, there's no late night, anything.
Yeah, I know you're not doing bright vibes this year, but is there typically a, it's always this weekend type thing or it just whatever? Sometime during the summer.
Last year it was just after Fourth of July, we were going to move it to the next weekend, but that Syracuse Nationals and that won't be happening. So I think those are mistakes. I think it would just fall right in that just after Fourth of July, right there. Because it has fireworks, you know, it's nice and so it makes sense for that.
And. Just clarifying fireworks, you get the permit? But another, um, another change has been. To the site plan is the parking. And there are now delineated spaces, which there weren't before. Um, whether, but I'm not sure it changes what was happening. It's just more organized, but that's a discussion item as well.
In terms of when I move the. Parking back from the right away.
That's a big one.
A big one and, uh. It's delineated, but that'll change with the new building too. Um, on the drawings, because you're going to have employee parking. Around the end of the building, right? So that'll, that'll, uh. Certainly change. And you, uh, already have the overflow parking identified.
Right. But do you know what the global parking spaces are on the plan?
Yeah.
I just don't know what plan I was looking at, right? So let's look at. I know that we had to label it, um. Label the numbers. I don't know that I ever got.
It's approximately, it was just under three hundred, I believe, but I'm going to pull it up for.
Yeah, I have the drawing to choose it. And so the total.
Total parking, overall total parking spaces are, uh. Total overflow and event parking lot is two hundred and six. Total regular customer is seventy eight. Total employee is twenty six. And eight of those, not in addition, but eight of those are ADA.
Yep.
Spaces. I'm, I'm sending this up right now to Tim. So that this is. And I'll be, uh.
You still don't like. Our show's thing that they would.
Saturday morning.
Over and like. Six sites.
Yeah.
And just getting back to the music festival, so. That was going to be a two day. A deal, how many of those do you anticipate having during the summer?
Typically, that's the only one I have. I do our anniversary party, like I might have a band. If I do a band, I might do a late night band would be during the day. I've done that before, but honestly, it is. It's just working out better with these guys. I get. Maybe in the case of a wind like that, it may carry, so we'll specifically go over to, to Michael or. The back head drill and check and make sure. That we're not exceeding that seventy decibels there, but, um, I don't anticipate having a lot of that because. Just. See, our sweet spot honestly is more just than, than the regular business season and even have an event.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea how many of those. Not necessarily from, well, from the noise standpoint, but just, you know, I mean, if it was going to be like once a month.
What I had in my originals. It's in the original, um, submission. I've stuck to that, that is submitted for Heritage Hill. Which was basically like a Fourth of July, which when, when we got bright vibes, I said, instead of doing both, I'm just going to make this my Fourth of July thing. Our anniversary party. I'd have to look back and I don't want to like commit to it right now, but I want to commit to what I originally committed to Heritage Hill. Um, as far as like any, you know, larger, you know, music type of thing like that. We do, we do have what, what I have done successfully. I've had some of those bands like, uh, Mike Powell, et cetera, play in the barn. And it ticketed like for hundred, hundred fifty people and nobody's complained about that. Doesn't get outside the barn, so I think that that's a better solution.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like it's outside music, just like this.
More simple, single guys, duos, et cetera.
And I just clarify when. Um, site plan that. Existing barns that that's also known as the banquet facility on.
No, it's called Event Barn. The barn, the cow barn is.
What I would call cow barn.
Yeah, Event Barn. It's what I call it. Where's the safe bank?
Some of the comments. Like county helped and stuff, talking about the banquet facility, so.
I'm guessing they're, they mean the event. I, I like call it the event bar. That's all.
Yeah, I'm just looking at clarification.
Yes, that's, I would say I'd have to look at their comment, but that's what my interpretation. Or does it sound no water, nothing?
But that's a bad.
Yes, yes, for sure. Yep, yes.
So there's a. Tank wise, if I read that, seven. Will it search tanks?
So, but there's, there's seven total right now. Yeah, and then there's, then there's, then there would be an additional. Tank for the new facility for the bathrooms.
That one's going to be a fifteen hundred?
Yes.
For the others.
Disposing of the, uh, brewery. Kitchen and bathroom.
Eventually, if the septic. When the septic gets approved, that would then go to the septic. And those tanks would then be used for.
The, the fifteen hundred gallon tank would be your typical septic tank, holding tank for the building and then that sends out to.
And you've got seven, the other seven tanks that are there or six others that are there right now. Your brewery waste goes in there, gets pumped out.
Yeah, I'll just explain the whole system. So, and I'm going to explain it as it's going to have to be, be the case in the months when that recapture tank is. But there's going to be a tank out front, two thousand gallon tank. It's going to capture all the brewery washout waste and then be shipped off. Inside, you got bathrooms and kitchens going out to septic first. Uh, kitchen goes to grease traps. Okay, there's a, I think it's a thousand gallon grease trap. And there's a fifteen hundred gallon septic tank. And, and they both go into this pumping station tank, which is fifteen hundred gallons. Now, after that, there's three more tanks. That aerate and process the waste, but thi- this whole system was designed to treat. The brewery waste, so it would go out neutral into the field, but then that all changed. So we're going to be processing all that. So by the time it gets out to septic. It's neutralized water. Um, and then there's going to be one additional tank. For the meat facilities. That'll be pumped out for se- for the septic or for the bathrooms. And then if the county approves. For the use of the septic filter, it will go into those aeration tanks, part of the system. So everything's going to be going through those aeration tanks that's not shipped off site.
What is there? Are they all off on the? I don't have the back in front of me. Were they all off on like the western side of the facility? It's their one up.
Yeah, three existing tanks. Right here, here, here and here. Here and then these other tanks. At releasing stations. So. The truck back here is going to have, we're going to have to make a, uh, like a roll stones. Leveling this out. Existing septic. Not, no, it's going to be. These, these are the only ones, these are the only ones. That will be going into the field. Which is right there. I got, I got, I got two nice ones that have this. You know, washing and everything, so that's the people.
Speak up, because there's a lot of people here.
I'm sorry.
Dan was explaining where the tanks, the system that he just explained to us here. That are located in around the west. Also, some of its sephrons are on the west side of the facility.
These are septic holding processing tanks.
Only two of them are going to be pumped out in.
Correct.
Rest of my treatment.
Treatment, free treatment for, uh, the field.
Right. So, and your practice, yes.
Yeah.
And then I asked him basically where. Route that the truck would take to. Get to the tank and empty the tank and take it out of the way. I was curious where the truck rolls. So.
High product is probably a better term than product.
Yes. Increase in the number of. Us parking spaces and people coming to the facility you anticipate because of the additional process is.
Nothing because the spaces, the spaces, the employees are going to be there when. You got to think this is, this happens opposite of Heritage Hills. Uh, right? So we get, because your weekends and evenings and the meat processing facility. Be open primarily during the week and during the early morning and day. Um, the total spaces.
Of that.
What's that?
You'll be giving tours, so it's going to be a visible process?
Um, it would be a plan ahead. It's got to be very specific that you'd have to have comfortable because it's going to be USDA processing facility. So you have to have. Garbs and everything like that. So it's not going to be like, oh, hey, come on up and we'll take a look at the facility. If you want to, if you, if you asked incremental, it would be the, um, I would define the incremental parking spaces on this. As the, I believe it's, um. Thirty-six on the south side. Right? Which people park there right now, but it's grass. Um, but we would actually put the millings like we talked about right there.
And I mean, I know everyone just got the letter from county and accepted today. We talked about that a bit. It was a condition. Um, and they're like, don't approve it unless. You get the. Um, the septic straightened out with county, um, Jeff Till, the county written a letters, um. It speaks for itself, so that's something that, um, we should review. You, you're not bound by that, but it is certainly. When the county gets their. Information, the county planning board, they get it from Jeff Till. So he's. That's the county planning board, but. He is their advisor.
But, right, he didn't say not to, he said. Condition. And no construction. It's right, no construction.
Um, and that's because you've made progress with them. What do you think your timing is on all of that?
You should be hooking it up now and said that the D and C just needs to issue a general, it was a one page general permit, but there, that's where. They're really frustrated with the D and C right now, uh, because. The person that's. Handling the project doesn't know what to do and, and is confused and. It's just a general permit. That's it, that they've already like verbally with Eric gone through all the drawings. They like the capture tank. I mean, I already had Tim order it. Which, this wasn't a bad decision, but I didn't need. More of a delay and, um. Should be now.
In Jeff's letter, when he says. As if we have not received a sewage disposal plan.
For the meat processing facility, because they said they will not look at that until they have approved. That, that was their previous position was that they would not look at that until they have approved it. So the engineer is in the process of sending him. The document now that they've issued us, because they wouldn't even open it to look at.
We still need that. You think you're going to have it soon?
Yeah.
Like before the next meeting?
Oh, without doubt. Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I, I don't.
And I can't, I can't commit to things that I don't control.
Well, that's the thing, like you leave here, I mean, you start asking, we call school week to week, um. The whole system will be running now. I mean, equipment's sitting in, in the building. It's not doing anybody any good there. Everybody's basically agreed to what it should be. It, it's, it's kind of ridiculous. I don't mind going on the record with that because. It's about a quarter of a million dollars on this thing. We just want to get it going. So I, I don't know what the buildup continues to be, right? And what it is. My control.
So what, I mean, that's for discussion. You took that under advisement. About the lights, and I don't know if she said this or not, but are the lights going to be on a timer? They're not on all the times?
So they're off now. I, I have to go turn that, when, when we have a decent sized crowd, they're using the overflow lot, I run out and, and get that one on and then turn it off. Now, um, on a switch. Um, I'm hoping. There, there's, I understand lights. I'm hoping the new lights are going to be, be pleasant for everybody. Because there's a level of safety and security that I have to maintain too with the brewery in the country. And outside parking and young waitresses and stuff like that. So it's got to be a balance. So I'm going to get these new lights. Put them in place. You know, I know the couple of neighbors that talked about it shining in their bedrooms, so I'll check with them and make sure. It's all good, you know, I, I know. I can go down to the back head drone, make sure that they're not like shining down that way and adjusted properly, but I, I do have to have light. Or for, you know, six years, it's, it's, I mean, you don't have that type of business.
Yeah, I think, I didn't, I couldn't remember if you had said that they were going to be. On a timer and.
No, because. Four o'clock in the morning could be even more important, you know, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember what you said about it, so. Um, so I, I wanted to bring up another, um, issue that, that came up at the last meeting, um, regarding. The, this. The, this additional use. And our code, which is one sixty-five dash nine point one, the farm business overlay zone district. So they, just to. Reiterate to this board. Been through this before, but, um. That what's allowed here is other accessory farm or agritourism uses and activities. So when, long as the general agricultural character of the farm is maintained and such uses occur through. The use of farm buildings only. Such uses may include, but not be limited to. So there's a whole list of things. Um, the, the list is not. Exhaustive, so there's other things that can fall into this. Our codes officer. Uh, has made a finding, uh, before sending this to this board. That the, um, the processing of the meats had, is. Something that is, um. Permitted. Based on this code. Um, however, um. They, this applicant has not requested and has specifically said there will not be any slaughter. And that is the finding that, um, is. Is going forward with this. If this goes forward, that's going to be. Um, a condition and it's, it's been a specific finding up to this point in time. Do, do you have any problem with that?
Slaughter is not allowed in an agriculture district. You would have a special use permit and change the zoning, so. Uh, shut me down if I did it, so absolutely not, have no interest, no experience, no, 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 no.
So have that written in would not be a problem for you.
Yeah, I think. Answer your question. We've never said that that's what we wanted. We don't want it, and if we would never do it, we don't want it.
I mean, there, there was some, some discussion about, well, if it's a USDA facility, then you have to let them do slaughter. That is not true. USDA does not, um, dictate what our code says.
It's not once have you said. That's why that.
You're not doing that on Grand Boulevard, are you?
Nope.
No. There'll be no reason for you to do it here.
Nope. Yeah, I don't know anything. I mean. I ain't saying that at all, so.
No, no. Done damages at the aquarium. Do they know what they need to bring back next time, Sue, or is there? List of what we're waiting for?
I have, I have compressor decibels.
Compressor decibel, John, driveway. How do we? Sure, that commercial grade driveway.
Do I have DOT too?
Okay.
We're doing that. Right, yes.
We should actually look back in our records and see if there is a DOT letter on the, um. Because it says so in the minutes that the DOT was.
It's still looking for work.
It's, it's. It may be, it may be in the DOTs, yeah. There's two, there's in, in and out. Still, yeah.
I'm getting that. Last, last time. Our schematic of the, the whole building put together.
It's a render.
Yes, can it be a single? Sue, when you say that, like, looking down at it or looking.
They wanna see on the road. They wanna see what it's gonna look like.
Just how it's, all ties. Because we have a great one of the new, new building. But I'd like to see it in proportion to how it looks.
Are they attached? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Separate but attached. I mean, like, we're not, the walls, the walls will hit each other.
Right, right.
But they're non-passable.
As you said. That overhead door. Like the truck back south, it could be deliveries that immediately go to the right end of brewery. Or a lot of them to be processed.
They've got a controlled, uh, door. To the brewery. There. And the other thing I have is a location of the ground source map of the ground source heat block.
Yep.
Um, I also had a question. This is from a novice. On the floor plan, a couple of the rooms were labeled spices.
Well, it's just a dry room for where we'll put together the spices for the sausage manufacturing. So it'll just be a, it's got a big spice closet. And we'll have, you know, scales in there and people will be weighing out the right amount of spices and putting the ingredients together and then. That will then make its way over to the production.
You can't tell you what it'll taste.
Top favorite recipe.
Hey, Colonel Sanders.
That's why there's two rooms.
Yeah.
Parking spaces versus S and E. Best ability expand. Yes. We haven't seen them. I, I'm doing a memo to you guys with my comments on.
Right.
I mean, I'm the seeker issues. And water consumption, the fighting. Parking.
Professor Chen. Yeah, you got that right, dude.
Yeah, I got it, sir.
If you have a rough sketch on this, the sign. Could be announced for the name.
I want to be a logo of you.
Four more bathrooms on the map, too.
There are, there, there are, the, 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 the one that Tim's, Tim's gonna send you. Uh, there's two different locations where they can be. Both locations are noted, but right now I'm only using them up at the upper one.
Let's wait. Yeah, like, if you get approved by D E C and whatnot, I get that too as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, don't wait till next being.
Yeah.
If you're doing that on map to. Color in what you've planted.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It should be.
I think they are. Yeah, they're identified.
Except for these banquet halls slashed. Once are slashed.
I never used the term banquet hall.
Somebody did.
Yeah.
Don't see that. And it's addressed some of the comments that were. Actually, most of the comments in my image were against the. Organization. Which this won't have anything to do with, but I'm glad to see. It's the best way to keep. In government and the neighborhood and the town and such. Answer your phone when they call and that sort of thing. I think you've done a great job there. I, I mean, we all, all us and all the family and. And the conditions and everything, I think we all. We all approve of this.
So I, it's, it's the, um, the public hearing is closed, as you know, um, but it's the pleasure of the board if you want to hear. Uh, anyone else. I do know that, uh, there are some neighbors that retained an attorney that is here tonight and is requesting. Um, to speak, yeah. Uh, pleasure of the.
Your attorney is requesting to speak?
Yes.
I'm, I'm alive. Eric, when she speaks all the time.
No, it's not. Public hearing per se.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah.
Do we need a motion on that, or?
No. I should have a chair. Yeah, all right, yes.
And these guys can.
The board.
You guys can sit down.
See. That's her, who, I mean, let's see. I give up. You're just sitting for a couple hours.
Thank you. My name is Dirk Adamo. I'm chairman of my card and some of the clerk copies. Thank you. And, uh, attorney Syracuse here, and I'm here this evening. I've been retained by, uh, the Heflers and other people. Border property are very concerned about. Possession, potentially specific on who the other people are. At this point, uh, the, uh, Hefler and his sister, I am specifically identifying others that I have spoken to. Or matters who are people who are encouraging me. So my, my formal, formal representation is with Joanne and Dan.
Okay, just, just a, a, a point that when we receive anonymous. Letters here, we don't. Address them in any manner, so to just say others. Um.
It's me also.
Uh. Order, order, order. I'm responding to what the, what you said. And I just wanna be specific that when you say others. We would like to know for the record. Who those others might.
I have spoken with others, and at this point I have no formal representation arrangement with them. But their interests coincide with. The Heflers.
Allegedly. But something with the Heflers now.
Why don't we stand up and show you who the others are?
Yeah. Well, let's, let's, let's. Um, I'm obviously not familiar with this matter. I have not previously attended. And so part of, uh, my investigation to review this matter. Has included information specifically prepared. For me by Joanne Hefler, and I wanna share with you what she shared with me, which will give you context. For the remarks I'm about to make. And, uh. I'll keep talking here as I was on passing this out. Generally, uh, it was identified. Uh, for me. Then up until the year two thousand sixteen. There was nothing much going on at the Palladino Farm, like she's been around a long time apparently. Um, and, uh, everything was kinda happy and copasthetic and, and so forth. But in two thousand sixteen. Apparently a restaurant, uh. Was created on the property. And then in two thousand seventeen, uh, you folks, I think, first considered the brewery. And, uh, so, um, this is the information that Joanne shared with me. And I tried to obtain from your town clerk. Records and I have a letter from her dated June fifteenth. Uh, she couldn't do that, that she didn't know whether she has the records and she put me off until the end of the month, and of course that. That's not gonna work for you folks here this evening, so. I guess you're gonna meet another evening on this matter so that. By the next time around, I may have the benefit of, uh. What documents she will furnish to me. But obviously, what, uh, I am most concerned about is. Your history of approval. As, uh. Site plan authorization. And, um. From my knowledge. The restaurant was never approved. Uh, when was Farm Days approved? When was outdoor music every Friday, Saturday, Sunday from April through October approved? When was outdoor camping approved? When was the outdoor lighting approved? And so forth. So I had the benefit of seeing Jamie's remarks. Um, at your. Last meeting and what she said this evening. And I would agree with her, it's most appropriate that. As a part of this application, you consider every aspect of the activity. That is ongoing on that property presently. And therefore. We now come to Seeker, and I was pleased to hear. Most of what you said this evening. And, uh, but I do disagree with you, and I think you're making a mistake. By classifying it as an unlisted action. I think this is clearly. A type one action under Seeker. And although it may not hit a specific button. In the statute, the statute clearly says in any other matters. That in the opinion of the approving board. Warrants the thorough and in-depth investigation that Seeker contemplates. The parking comes close on the button, and I think your parking is very understated. Because we know on some events. That have been there in the past, more than five hundred vehicles have been on that site, and that is the button. For a type one action under Seeker. And of course. Seeker. Would lead to the required in-depth study of. And you hit on tonight with Jamie's assistance. Um, the water aquifer, I wanna tell you, is as big an issue as you have. Before you. People surrounding this site depend upon their water. From the well. There's a significant concern. That the water aquifer may become depleted. And you have no scientific evidence. For you regarding that impossible eventuality. You have a statement from a well driller. I don't know what his. Prudential's are, but I'm sure he is not a hydrologist. And I think you absolutely should have a hydrologist. To investigate this site and require the applicant to produce it. And make that a part of your consideration. Noise pollution, you've addressed it to some extent. It requires further flushing out. Emission pollution. What's going into the air from this activity? You started to discuss highway access and parking. Sewage disposal. And nighttime lighting. At the seat of my pants, there are six items that I think are major considerations. And I know my clients. Are very concerned about. No impact adverse to them will occur. As a result of those activities. Now. I think you got yourself in a. Not an easy decision, to be honest with you. You have an interplay. Here of New York State Ag and Markets Law. Which is the right to farm law. And you have your own local code. And I think you gotta be careful you don't get lost. Ag and Markets has a very broad view. Of what an operating farm. Can and should be. And they're prepared to render opinions regarding that. However. As broadly as Ag and Markets. May contemplate. An operating farm should be allowed to pursue. You have to look at your code. Your statute, which Jamie just had reference to. To see whether or not your code. Authorizes the activities. That we're talking about. Meat processing. In this new building, I think clearly is not allowed on your local code. Under the section that Jamie read. It says. The activity must be. In a replacement. Modification of an existing building. That's not what's happening here. This is, they're tearing down a Quonset hut. Which has a smaller footprint. Than the new processing building. Clearly not authorized under your statute, so. You should stop immediately in considering it. Send them back to the town board, let the town board look at it, maybe they'll amend the law to allow it, but clearly. Not allowed in my judgment. Based upon my review in local code. You know. As well as my clients do. That. Palladino Farm traditionally has been a crop farm. They've had some animals over the years, but it's never been a cattle farm. And yet now, out of the clear blue, they're gonna process. In three. Segments every day, possibly twenty-four hours. Meat processing. Meat processing. When is a farm not a farm? Is this really a farm anymore? Or is this a commercial? Industrial? Or an amusement park? What is this place? Is it a farm? And I think that's a gut issue for you folks. I live in Camilla suburbia. I got everything within a few miles of my house. You're out here in wonderful, beautiful land. And you gotta travel for services and I'm sure you welcome. Some of what he is offering. But is he allowed to become a supermarket? Is he allowed to provide all those services? That otherwise are readily available to us to live in suburbia? He's a farm. He's not a commercial. Industrial enterprise. And is this right for your community as much as you may enjoy some of his offerings? And I think what's happened here. Is the meat processing facility is taking this over the top. And now some of the matters that have festered for some time, the noise. Why is he in the business of providing music? Friday, Saturday and Sundays, out of doors, in the air. Or whoever to hear that's within earshot. Is that a farm? Where is that authorized? In your statute? For him to be in the entertainment business. Now. Clearly. If he's gonna offer. A wedding. Banquet. That music should be. Indoors, shouldn't it? And we wouldn't have no problem with that. The door's closed, maybe in a nice weather, the windows open. But it most certainly would mute the sound. And sound travels easily. Depending upon atmospheric conditions. It becomes exaggerated in some situations. So the, the question here is, and, and again. Armin Ag and Markets says that occasionally. For a farmer. Who read out his structure for these types of festivities. Is an accepted thing. To allow him to. Showcase his farm. That's the purpose. It's not the purpose to furnish to you or me a place to hold our event. It's supposed to be marketing of the farm. And if you read Ag and Markets. I really wanna commend to you. And you can all get it online as I did. Guidance document. I don't find it there. Um, the Ag and Markets has, it's, it's five or six pages long. And it's a document they generated, uh, in two thousand nineteen. And it really lays out this whole thing. Of allowing the farmer more opportunities. To feed his family, make a living. And at the same time, provide a service for the community. It's all rooted in marketing. Of the farm and what it generates. Whether it be crops. Or food products. And as a matter of fact, once you read it. You'll see that if he's preparing food for consumption. It's supposed to be almost a hundred percent grown. Created on the farm. Right in there. His revenue. Is supposed to not exceed thirty percent of his gross. From the non-agricultural activities. And he's expected to keep. Records. Showing dollars and cents as to what portion of his income is derived from traditional farming. Products, activities. As opposed to. Like entertainment. And so forth. So. I, I tend to think that because of the expansive definition. Of an operating farm. That we get caught up in looking at this. It's rooted in your town board, your local law. What did your town board? Envision, contemplate. It was approving. By way of activity. That they wanted. To allow Palladino to pursue on his property and I think truly. This matter has to go back to them for clarification. I do not accept the code officer's. Opinion. And I sat here tonight thinking about. Whether I wanna challenge that, but I really think. Which can be done, but. I, I think it falls on your lap. So the challenge will come. Again, as against you, if you accept his position. And, and I think procedurally, that's where we go. This is an application that requires an awful lot of details. And I, I, I understand the vigor. And the time your applicant has dedicated to this matter. I don't think he's an expert. I think you have to require scientific evidence and expertise. To guide you so that you make the right decision. Make sure that the precious. Atmosphere. Of your town in that area, that sector. Is preserved for what these people expected. They would have for themselves and their families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Derek.
Think about lots of things. Anything. Take emotions.
So there's a lot of things to sort through and a lot of comments, like to. Put the minutes as soon as possible, so.
I have, I have one question. Can I ask one question? Do we as the neighbors have any more input into this process? Because we have a lot of other things that we would like to add. I would, in rebuttal to Mr. Palladino's. Proposal.
The public hearing has been closed.
And we just get that one chance to, to complain and that's it? We, we don't have any other.
A complaint session.
Well, if you present. Evidence of issues that we have that we believe need to be rectified.
What of information, please? Madam Chairman, um, I believe you made a motion to. Amend the site plan application based on the information that was dropped on you. Three minutes before the meeting started?
No. No, it, it seems like they're saying that it's an amend, it's ongoing, it's an amended site plan application.
I, I, I gotta say, I think it's a little disingenuous that that information was put to the board. The public hasn't seen that information. And we should have the opportunity on that, on that.
And we're not making any decisions tonight. A lot of it had to do with answers. Of things that have been going on for two, three, four months now.
We don't know that. None of us have seen it.
But we need the time to take this info and read and digest. Because a lot of it refers back to. A county report or a comment and there's a lot of. Going back and forth and this is an important decision for everyone and we wanna make sure we do this right.
If, um, all of the items. Should be available to the public. And are they on a, are they standing on a website? You have to mean? Yeah, do we? We do. We've put everything like with our solar applications, that's all on the website. I don't know what.
So.
We can, we can make all this documentation available.
We'll give it all to whoever the webmaster is and. Make sure it's all. Uploaded on the website.
You know that's.
We have a, can I, can I ask a question? I know it's not a public meeting, but. Um, there's a lot of people in this room. Who are, who have a problem with what's going on up there. And if you can't open a public meeting for us to add the additional comments, can we all put it in writing and give it to you so you can read it?
Absolutely.
Sign names, yes.
We have received a lot of letters from people and we can continue to receive those.
Can they be by email? Cause I sent one, but it wasn't signed and I never got acknowledgement that it was received. Right after the meeting, the day after. I sent it to you, Susan. I got no response. And I finally sent it to Sarah and asked her to put it into record. And I asked it, I gave copies to everybody to have it. And I don't know, did you get it? Did you read it?
Yeah, we got that letter. And all of the comments that, um. Esteemed attorney has made to us, we will take into consideration and he's given us copies of things, so. And that's all on the record, but we will take all of that into consideration.
And please make them. Yours was original, but please make them an original letter, not a form letter. Be specific, but please sign your names to them.
So where do we send them? We have some additional stuff to add.
Uh, we will, we will run with the, with the town clerk to make sure that these, everything that we have. Is available. And I think what you do are right, you shouldn't have to go searching for it.
Do you want to remind people that? This board is not. The enforcing board. We have to go within the laws. There are codes that are given to us. And we do the best that we can. To match them up and make sure. Or hopefully ensure. That we can do the best we can for Poppy. If something after they're approved and they go off and do something else. It's not those boards job to go knock on the door and go, that's not what we approve. Okay, we are not charged. With that. We will take. Your comments and the consideration. But we can't. Enforce with something that we can't.
Who is that? Code enforcement officer.
This doesn't, it's not a other thing that's important. The music. Goes on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, sometimes all week. And I just wanna say that, that the planning board. Told Mapstone that you had, they had to have the music inside. We want the music inside now. We don't wanna go through another summer. Two years, two summers from April to October, every weekend, we're listening to the music. We don't wanna listen to it anymore. Can you please ban, bring music inside?
Okay. These are two types of things, put them in full letters.
It's in there, you got it.
So that we're not. Into arguing match here in a public meeting. Let's be civil. We all live here. And there's a lot of things we like, there's things that we don't like, but we do need to get along.
Expert clarification. Said you, the public comment section is closed, but you allowed an amendment to the application. Doesn't that warrant a dictate? That the altering of the public.
No, we didn't, we didn't amend the application.
That part, it's always been an amended application. It was just a statement. It was a statement.
I heard someone say that we amended and that you approved it. I saw you vote on it.
Yeah, we need to adjourn. Hey, please send your own emails to the town clerk. She will forward them to us. Thank you for your time and for coming to site. Thank you for your concern for Poppy and make a motion to adjourn.